Hi Russ, I'm on the call as well.
Okay, we're gonna get started, it's 5:30. Alright, so I will call the May 4th, 2020 West Des Moines City Council Meeting to order. Ryan, you wanna, you wanna take the call?
Yes, I will. Hardman?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Trevillion?
Here.
And Trimble?
Ready to rock and roll, I'm here.
Alright, we have five members present.
Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of the agenda as distributed.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Agenda is approved. Item 2 is Citizens Forum, which should be the, anytime, anyone in the audience listening to the meeting that would like to address the City Council on any item that's not part of public hearings. Item 6 are new business, item 7. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Mayor, City Council, City Manager reports and other entity updates. Renee, we'll start with you.
Oh, okay. Wasn't prepared for that. I don't really have any thing to report on the committees that I've been meeting with, new and different, so, but I will take a moment of personal privilege to acknowledge a couple of folks. I was going through my Cityscape magazine over the weekend and I realized that it was this week, as most of us might know or may not know, is Municipal Clerks Week, where it is their 51st anniversary of celebrating municipal clerks. And so, I wanna do that, actually. I wanna recognize Ryan, and I know he has a new person, Julius, and I know Katie Johnson helps as well. I wanna just go on record by saying, Ryan, we appreciate a lot of the work that you do. You do a lot of things behind the scenes, keeping things together. There are a million and one things that you do that we don't even know that you do. So, in honor of Municipal Clerks Week, I wanna thank you so very, very much for all that you do, and Julius, I know you have another sidekick, and I know Katie helps a lot too, so, your work does not go unnoticed, and I am extremely appreciative of you and what you do for the city.
Thank you very much, Renee.
Alright, great, thank you. Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items here. First, I wanna thank you, Mayor, as well as I think Dick Szczesinski's office and maybe Tom Haddon was involved with extending the relief for that strict compliance for certain requirements, including the signage during the pandemic. I know that's helped several restaurants in our community. Second, just briefly, kinda along those same lines, Councilwoman Hardman and I had a development and planning meeting this morning where we heard a little bit more about additional businesses and specifically restaurant closures in our community, and so, just wanna, you know, it's important reminder that we, you know, it's good to continue to be mindful of how many in our community are continuing to struggle, both, obviously, businesses and individuals with the fallout of the pandemic, and so, you know, ways we could continue to offer and lend support and be creative is certainly helpful, and I know on our agenda today, we have some significant steps forward on the CBD grants. And then finally, very consistent with Renee's comments, you know, I understand it is Public Service Recognition Week, so it's just a quick thank you to, you know, everybody at the city for the good work and the service to our community, especially during these difficult times. You know, although my time has been pretty limited, and I certainly had an appreciation before, having seen a lot of the hard work, diligence and preparation, frankly, the giving nature of the work that's done, I see it, obviously, from a slightly different perspective now, and I'm incredibly appreciative of all the hard work, and that often goes unnoticed day to day, so, thank you to everybody at the city for, for your service.
Thanks, Matt. Kevin, council report?
Nothing of his time.
Alright, Greg?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. I think Councilwoman Hardman and Councilman McKinney, I think they, I wanna echo what they said because it's certainly a time of struggle. I also just wanted to share that I see a lot of resilience in our community, and I'm really impressed with the way that people of West Des Moines have come together, and so I really want to thank the citizens of West Des Moines because it is, it is a hard, it is a hard time, it's a very difficult time, but again, I think I see some, a lot of resilience, and I appreciate that. Also, one point, the City School Committee, we haven't been meeting as of late because, well, obviously, school has been canceled for the rest of the academic year, which of course is unfortunate, but, so certainly, working at, over at Valley and seeing a lot of students there, it's, I also see a lot of resilience from the young people in our community. It's a really, really hard time for them, but I really wanted to express my appreciation for those students because they're really going through a lot as well, because their school year, a very meaningful time, has been ended. But one thing that, I was reaching out with Dr. Buck of Waughie Community School District, and they were working on some boundary issues, and I reached out based on kind of what I saw from the West Des Moines perspective, and the boundaries they approved, I think are the correct boundaries, because they had two different choices. The one that they went with was really the best one for West Des Moines when it comes to school crowding, when it comes to keeping neighborhoods intact, so I wanna appreciate, wanna share my appreciation with Dr. Buck and his team over in the Waughie School District for creating a plan that is really the best for West Des Moines, and I have nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Russ?
Yeah.
On you.
Yep, yep, I wanna make sure I was live here. So, first thing I'm gonna mention is, we've had three meetings thus far of the Disaster Recovery Partnership Planning Advisory Committee, kind of a long name there. Our plan revolves around what recovery looks like when we come out of, out of this thing, and businesses start reopening, and people start going back to life as, as they used to know it, and what the basic needs of the community are gonna be, specifically revolving around the physical health and safety of people, mental health, and people's financial health. We have talked about who needs to be at the table, who needs to be at the table when we're having discussions on what recovery looks like. We've identified the business sector, which Greater Des Moines Partnership is, is representing. We've also talked about, identified various religious organizations, mental health organizations, hospitals, the insurance industry, financial institutions, organizations that represent older Iowans, low-income Iowans, refugees, certainly people from the schools need to be at the table, childcare providers, and, and many others. Today, we also had a small discussion about trying to put in place best practices and protocol for when businesses reopen, when it comes to health, health screening for checks, testing, recommendations on PPE, hygiene practices, and social distancing as well. Like I said, we've had three meetings. We continue to meet, you know, anticipating that we're gonna start reopening relatively soon, and I think the next meeting is probably a week from now. Also, we had, April 22nd, we had an FNA committee meeting, and during that FNA committee meeting, we had discussions about the, the Community Development Block grant funding that we're gonna be receiving. We're gonna be receiving $327,000 in CDBG funds in FY20, or we have received in FY20. We're also getting $193,000 in COVID-19 CDBG funds. You have this on the agenda tonight. I do wanna point out, and I had discussions with many of you individually, and, and really appreciate your support of, of the plans that Christine Gordon, the mayor, City Manager Tom Haddon, came up with in regards to about $373,000 that's gonna be put towards what we're calling homeless prevention programming. This is, is gonna be very significant as we try to help people get back on their feet. It's, it's a very large sum of money that's gonna go to low and moderate income West Des Moines residents, to help them with their utility assistance, to help them with, with rent assistance, and to help them with mortgage assistance. You know, we know that our low-income and moderate-income Iowans are gonna struggle as we come out of this, and so, that's gonna be extremely important going forward, and hopefully we'll have a, a press release very shortly on this. I think we, we definitely need to make sure that people are aware that this assistance is available, and get that out to the public as, as soon as possible, assuming that we approve that tonight. We also had a discussion on the Historic Valley Junction Foundation and kind of the struggles that they're going through. Nearly all of the Valley Junction events are being postponed or canceled, and they're having, having a huge lasting impact on their budget, and they don't have adequate reserves to cover the shortfall. They applied for a payment protection program loan, and they have access to some additional capital and, and line of credit, but they likely will run out of funds by mid to late summer, so, given the role that they play down there to help our, our Main Street businesses, and all the great work that they do, we felt that it was crucial to, to support them in their efforts as they work to help our businesses come out of this. We had $28,000 remaining in the two of our economic development programs down there after making a couple of awards. That's the Property Improvement Fund and the Regulatory Compliance Fund, and, you know, 28,000 in awards to a, a business, it's not gonna go very far. We, we recommended moving that money to the Historic Valley Junction Foundation to help them with their operations. In addition, there was $25,000 that we had programmed in our hotel motel budget that was gonna be for repairs down in, in Valley Junction. We have other ways to take care of some of the needed repairs down there, and so we're also recommending that we move that money to help them out with operations. Just so you know, they've, they've already reduced the pay of their staff by, by 50%, and they are really doing everything that they can to be responsible and, and work to get through this, and, you know, they're, they're doing the best they can. This is some assistance that's greatly needed for them, and, you know, look forward to providing them with that assistance. Sorry for a really long update here. Last, last thing I wanna talk about is the phenomenal job that our finance department has done in regards to forecasting our projected budget shortfalls, and coming up with a, an estimate that they felt was, maybe not the worst-case scenario, but it wasn't the best-case scenario either. It was kind of a middle-road projection. They're estimating that for the remainder of FY20, we're gonna lose about $2.8 million, and if this persists beyond June 30th, we're talking about additional losses between $500,000 and $750,000 each month, and they came up with an action plan to balance the budget, and some recommended cuts. Some of these things include delay in hiring of staff, hiring them instead of July 1, and hiring them in January, which would save us six months of those salaries, limit or eliminate travel plans for not only employees, but Sister Cities Commission members as well. Talked about the FY21 internal transfer to public art being delayed. The Public Art Commission does a great job. They have a lot of exciting projects going right now, but they've got the funding to get them through and, and complete those projects, so we're talking about delaying that, and we've also got many seasonal intermittent employees mainly in parks and rec who have been furloughed until the programming resumes. We also talked about delaying a number of projects and potentially, you know, borrowing from the sewer fund to fund our RecPlex project if, if need be, so, just kudos go out to, to Tim and Chris and the finance department on everything they're doing to get ahead of this and make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and spending taxpayer dollars as wisely as possible. So, that's it from my report, Your Honor.
Alright, thank you. Tom, any city manager report?
Uh, just a real quick, when I said, we're, we're working with Metro Waste Authority with, and Brett Hoddny at Public Services. Many people are getting boxes, of course, because in light of a COVID-19 delivered to their door, so they have all these cardboard boxes, and their recycling bins are overflowing, so we're gonna locate at Southwoods initially, and the next week or two, we'll, we'll get a press release out when that happens, but a container, a large container, so people can break down their cardboard boxes and take them there, so they, they're not, their green carts aren't overflowing, and then down the road, we'll have one, our new, in the end of the summer, probably have two at public service, one at public services facility, a new one on 88th, and one at the old one down by the Valley Junction area, so, it's not a huge thing in light of all the issues we're facing, but it's, it is something that I know the people appreciate it, because we don't have one in town now.
Thanks. Okay. Tom, is, Tom, is that, is that through Metro Waste Authority?
Yeah, we're working with them on that. I don't know if they'll be paying for all the pulls on it, but they'll, they'll be cooperating with it. I think they're gonna pay for some of it possibly, yeah.
This, this is a big deal that Metro Waste Authority started, and some, they've, they're doing some pilot projects in some other communities, and the other communities love it so far, that people can take their cardboard boxes and recycle them. It saves a lot of room in their recycle bin, like you said, so that's, that's awesome. I appreciate that very much.
Alright, one update for me. I've been asked by Channel 5 to come on their morning show tomorrow at 6:45, just to talk high level on a lot of the things the city's addressing with regard to this COVID-19 situation, so, Channel 5 is always great about asking us to have some input and what's going on in the community, so I appreciate that, other than the early, early time, but. Item 4 is a consent agenda. Are there any items on there that any council member wants to pull tonight?
4P.
4P, okay.
Hey, Steve, before we, before we get to that, can I ask one question real quick, and just for clarification purposes, I, I'm not, I thought this went through the Public Services Subcommittee, but are we as a city not able to do the annual garbage day pickup that we normally do the first week of June? Has that been discussed?
It's been, yes.
Delayed.
Delayed.
Yeah, till fall, I think. If Brett, I know Brett, if you're on the, on the line, Brett, but I think it's fall, we're gonna do it.
Okay. I've had some residents ask about that. I'll let them know. Alright, I would just move, I would just move the remainder of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items pass. Item 4P, Kevin, is a resolution to approve the termination of lease agreement with the West Des Moines Business Incubator.
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of things on this. First of all, the very last paragraph says that the lease shall terminate 180 days from the date proclaimed by Governor Reynolds allowing merchants to fully open in Polk County or June 30, 2021. I presume that's supposed to be June 30, 2020, correct?
No, this is Dick. Actually, Kevin, it's a five-year, 60-month lease, but the lease began June 16th or June 30th of 20, or excuse me, 2016 rather than 2015, because the provision of the lease was that it didn't start to run until the improvements made by the city were completed and accepted, and that was just, so.
I understand that, Dick, but, but that's when the lease expires, is June 30, 2021. This motion would be to give them 180 days notice to vacate early, correct?
Right, it would be the earlier of 180 days.
But that's gotta be June 30, 2020.
Well, we don't know when the, when it's gonna, when the governor is gonna open up the state, so it's the earlier of, it'll be no later than June of 2021, but if the governor, what do I wanna say? She, she opens up the state, it's 180 days from that date.
But Dick, the lease expires June 30, 2021.
Correct.
I think, I think, Kevin, what that means is, is that it's gonna terminate 180 days from when the governor opens everything up, or it's gonna terminate on June 30 of 2021, whichever comes first. The notice doesn't start June 30 of 2021.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, you and Dick are talking about two different concepts.
We, we thought it would be fair to give them six months from when the governor announces that she's reopening the state in, in Phase 1, and, you know, I, I, I thought that may be applied to already what she's done, but she didn't open up.
Polk County.
Polk County, so I think it only makes sense that we do it six months from when she announces the first phase of, and it's not necessarily the retail, I, I think the intention was, first phase, whatever that is, whether that's retail businesses opening or not, it was first phase of opening Polk County, or, you know, six months from that time, or June 30 of 2021, whichever came sooner, like the mayor said.
Okay, so you're, so you're assuming that this possibly will, that the businesses will never open up?
Well, if.
By having this June 30, 2021.
If the governor doesn't open up, if doesn't open up Phase 1, whatever Phase 1 ends up being, for Polk County until January, then, yeah, then, then they will go until six months after that. You know, that would be, that would take them to June 30 of 2021. Now, I don't think that anybody in their right mind believes that we're not gonna open until January. I would anticipate that within the next, I don't know, couple weeks, couple months, the governor's gonna start, depending on what the numbers look like, start opening up these other 22 counties.
Alright, well, this just doesn't even make any sense that we're not gonna give them a, a definite 180 days from what, other than when and if the governor opens up. Alright, the second part of this is, Gravitate is not a business incubator, so therefore the sublease is in violation of the requirement of our lease with the West Des Moines Business Incubator. The sublease that Gravitate has with West Des Moines Business Incubator was signed by Jeff Wood as owner of Welch Avenue LLC. In researching this on the Secretary of State's website, I found something quite interesting. I remind you that voters rely on the accuracy of the Secretary of State's website to guide them for elections and business filings. According to the Secretary of State's website, Jeff Wood is not the registered owner. His wife, Hope Wood, is. How is this sublease even legal by Jeff Wood signing it as the owner? I sent an email to Jeff Wood with Gravitate and Mike DeCoke, the West Des Moines Business Incubator President, last week, asking what Gravitate is doing to help small businesses that are located at 318 Fifth Street during this COVID-19 crisis. I ask if they were, are deferring or waiving the monthly rent for these businesses. I have never heard from Jeff Wood. Mike DeCoke did respond. You all were included in his mail, email back to me, so I will go into everything that he wrote, but I do wanna point out that he said that he knows, and I'm not sure how he knows, since he's not part of Gravitate, but that he knows Gravitate has made accommodations on a case-by-case basis with many of these tenants. He did not go into specific details as to what these accommodations are. I would point out that I asked a specific question regarding deferring or waiving rents. Seems to me it would be a pretty easy question to answer, however, he did not answer it. I have been told that Gravitate is still collecting rent from their clients each month, and if they don't pay by the first of the month, their access to the building is locked out. I ask you, how is this helping small businesses? According to the Gravitate Facebook page, they received the payroll protection plan loan, yet they are still collecting rent. How is this legal? Most of the small businesses in 318 Fifth Street do not qualify for the payroll protection plan because they do not have any employees. I am quite certain that most of their clients have been affected by the pandemic, which has created an extreme slowdown, if not a shutdown, on the projects that these small businesses were working on. It seems quite clear that Gravitate is more concerned about their own business than they are the small businesses that they claim to be assisting with at 318 Fifth Street. I would move item 4P with the revision, 180 days start today, and would then require the building at 318 Fifth Street to be vacated on or before October 31, 2020.
Okay, let me see if there's a second to Kevin's motion, then, Dick. I'll see if you can answer the two legal questions that Kevin asked. Does anyone want a second Kevin's motion? Okay, hearing, hearing none, it dies for a lack of a second. Dick, can you respond to the legal questions that Kevin had?
To be honest with you, Kevin, I did not realize that Jeff Wood didn't own Gravitate, so the signatory on that, he represented himself as the owner, you know, it is what it is. I, we've been operating for that way since 2017 with the assumption that he was the owner, he's represented in those, that way, so the fact that it's going to be terminated relatively soon in one form or fashion, I guess it, it might be a moot point. I, I can't give you a better explanation than that. As to the use of the building by Gravitate, I think that was part of the issue that arose when it was time to take a look at the extension or renewing the contract, the lease with them, and I did issue an opinion that, although it was done in good faith, I didn't feel that the work that Gravitate was providing and the funding that was being provided by the city were, were quite to, to the standards required under the state statute, so I think that may have played into the fact that we'd have to rewrite that lease in some form or fashion if it had not been for the fact that the council has taken the direction to, to use this as, for another purpose as a city facility, so, these are all issues that, you know, have been addressed, and we've tried to address them, and, but the mere fact that we are now terminating that lease, I guess, I can't really tell you anything to do other than that.
But Dick, your comment that this might be a moot point because the term, the, the lease will be expiring soon, is very possible that it won't expire till June 30, 2021, which is over a year from now, so I, I find this a little, little frustrating that Mr. Wood can misrepresent himself, signing legal documents as an owner when he's not, so what else has he lied about and been dishonest about, and here we go, just keep allowing him to run business as usual, making money off of the taxpayers when he's getting that building for a dollar a year?
Well, I think the council took that, the Subcommittee took that into consideration. As I said, they are there now, they do have tenants that they have to have removed from the building, or, you know, leave the building, and so 180 days is provided by the lease, and I think the council, the Subcommittee was looking at the fact, as Councilmember Trimble has indicated, it certainly doesn't appear as it's gonna run till June 30 of 2021 as far as opening up the state, so this appeared to be the best solution, kind of pursuant to the terms of the lease, while also allowing them some transitional period.
Well, and I also understood from Chief Lou that they, our public safety people wouldn't be in a position to really take that facility over in the next six to nine months anyway. They need a little bit longer period, so I think that was another consideration as far as trying to find the right balance on the timing.
Russ, let me ask you this. When I talked to you last week.
Yes.
About this, you had indicated that it was gonna be the end of this year, so why is it 2021? I just find that real frustrating, that you told me one thing, and now, what your committee is recommending is six months after that.
Well, well, I guess what we were looking at, Kevin, is that there was, you know, you were suggesting that from the letter that Dick sent, the day that Dick sent the letter, from six months after that, that the lease ought to be terminated. They responded, the incubator responded, and had talked about the struggles that the business, small businesses were facing due to COVID-19, and had asked us at that time respectfully to take a look at ending the lease, if we were going to do so, six months after the governor announced the reopening of the state. We changed that to say Phase 1 of the reopening. As soon as Phase 1 came out, you know, whatever that was for Polk County, it would start and, and it would end six months from that point, so we were trying to be accommodating to them, knowing that there's a number of small businesses that, that work out of that facility, and given the environment in which we currently live, it was gonna be extremely difficult for them to, to go look, to find a new office space at this time, so we were trying to be accommodating and understanding, knowing that we were gonna be terminating that lease. I don't think anybody here thinks that the governor isn't gonna reopen Polk County until January. Yeah, if she does that, yeah, then they're gonna have their lease go until it was gonna originally expire anyway. That being said, you know, I, I think we're on a path probably to see the governor do Phase 1 in the next couple of weeks or months at latest, is what I would see happening.
Um, I like. I still find it troubling though that you told me it was gonna be the end of the year, and now it's June 2021 on this document.
I'd like to jump in if I might. Contrary to public opinion or any fellow council member, I chair public safety, and I was very much actively involved in the discussions and the hearings, so I'd like to weigh in on that, because it wasn't just Russ's decision. We collectively made this decision and brought it as a recommendation to the council, so, the way I stand on this, regardless of whether Jeff Wood is on the Gravitate Secretary of State statement, you guys have been at this relationship way past just now. You've been at it now for almost four years, right? And FNA, and the FNA has been a part of all of that.
Yes.
So now we're at the end of this relationship, coming toward the end, that doesn't only affect Gravitate, but it also affects other. That doesn't only affect Gravitate, but it also affects other businesses that are in there. It would behoove us to make an exit out of that relationship, but be a tad bit graceful about it and give businesses an opportunity to start looking and finding their space versus just throwing people out on their heads at a moment's notice. You guys have been a part of, and FNA, been a part of this agreement for a while, and originally said it as 2021. So if the Secretary of State's signature, I don't understand why that wasn't checked then. So I think we're at the close of this relationship and we're getting there. But sometimes you just have to breathe a moment and say, what's in the best interest of not only just, regardless of Jeff Wood, but the other people that are out there that need their time and space as well. And so the decision was made, listening to public safety, that they weren't going to be taking over that space as quickly as maybe we had envisioned. It gives people an opportunity to pause and say, let's do what's right for the city, which might be a little bit longer than maybe someone wants it to be, but what's in the best interest of these other businesses that also need and are affected by this decision? We went into this agreement, before my time, the city went into this agreement. And this is the agreement that you guys made. And so we need to look at how it affects the bigger plan of things, exit as we're going to exit, but yet try to be, we're a little reasonable about how we affect so many people. That's where I personally stand. Yeah, we need to leave, and I said it perfectly, as Chair of the committee, I said that. But I also recognize there are ways to effectuate that change that might allow people to get out when they can with a little bit more notice.
These people operate on a month-to-month basis. These people operate on a month-to-month basis, so giving them over a year seems ridiculous.
Well, Kevin, you're, you're making a lot of allegations and, and providing a lot of statements that, you know, we, we don't know whether those things are, are true or not, and, and maybe they will be, and Jeff Wood isn't here to defend himself either. You know, none of us knew that he didn't, uh, the relationship that he had in this business with his wife, or who was the signatory or not. And, uh, you know, we also don't know whether or not Jeff is providing assistance to those businesses that have a hardship at this time, you know. I asked him that question. He told me that if somebody came to him and had a hardship, that he would work with them. Now, that being said, I don't know how many times that, that's happened, if it's happened at all. But, you know, there's just a lot of statements that you're making, Kevin, that I, I can't, I can't confirm nor deny. I, I don't know the answer to these things. What I told you is that, uh, after the meeting, that we made a decision to try to accommodate them in their request to say six months after the governor announced reopening of the state in Phase One. Now, it ended up that Polk County wasn't involved. We had to put an end date on there, so it was the, the earlier of, six months from when the governor announced the reopening of the state, Phase One, or June 30th, 2021, whichever came first. But again, I don't think anybody in their right mind thinks that we're, Polk County is going to be closed for the remainder of 2020. So I didn't lie to you. I mean-
Why don't I, why don't I ask for a, a motion in a second, and then we'll take final comments? Renee, you want to move that, since you're Chair in the committee, that this came through?
Am I moving the item number P?
Yes.
Okay, I move item number P as it relates to the incubator 318 Fifth Street.
And so the, the terminate, the lease termination date would be the sooner of 180 days from when Governor Reynolds opens Phase One in Polk County or June 30th of 2021. That, that would be the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I just, I just, again, I've said it before, but I just want to make clear, it's when she announces Phase One in Polk County. Phase One in Polk County could be, you know, the reopening of, of parks in, in state parks in Polk County. Clock starts ticking.
Russ, that's not what, that's not the way this is worded. So if you want to re, Renee wants to restate her motion, that's fine, but it is, says allowing retail merchants to fully open.
Kevin, I clarified the motion, and it was when she opens Phase One in Polk County. It has nothing to do with retail. That's why I clarified it. And Renee agreed to that. So that's the motion in the second. I think I heard Matt wanting to say something. Matt, you want to jump in?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I appreciate the dialogue. Kevin, I appreciate you taking the time to look into the issue. And I, I don't have all of the facts that, you know, that you've outlined. I did have a chance to pull up the Secretary of State's website here. Um, and in a filing on July 26th of 2019, Jeff does sign it as the owner. Um, and I looked at the certificate of organization dated in 2013. He signed it as the owner. It does look like maybe his wife signed it as a, as a agent, a filing. I think it was a biannual report. So, and, and you don't have to be the owner to, you know, to file a, a biannual report, which is very common. And so I just, just to clarify, what I'm seeing here on the Secretary of State's website from the certificate of organization on August 29th, 13th to July 29th, 19th, I think Jeff Wood is, is definitely the owner. Nonetheless, I do appreciate, you know, the other points you made and, and appreciate what the committee did. You know, I, I've spent time in Gravitate, both, you know, Valley Junction Neighborhood Meetings down there and otherwise. And, you know, there are a lot of businesses that are there, and I guess, you know, what, what really concerns me is, you know, not allowing those businesses a sufficient period of time to adapt, particularly in this sort of situation. So I think I'm in favor of, uh, you know, allowing a, a good period of time for people to transition out. And I think just need to be mindful, to Kevin's point, uh, you know, of sorts of agreements like this in the future.
Hey, uh, one more, one more quick question. Councilwoman Hardman, as the Chair of the committee, you know, what Kevin said, uh, what Kevin just proposed was six months from today. Russ, what you just mentioned was in the next couple of weeks, or maybe a month, the governor will reopen Phase One, which would make it seven months. So we're all in agreement that it's going to be at least six months. It'd be really, really tough to imagine it being eight or nine months from now. What's important to me, and Councilwoman Hardman, since you're the Chair of the committee, I would direct this to you, is this somewhat of a compromise that we are ending this relationship, even though it is a termination? Would you identify it as, as a compromise that ends the relationship somewhat amicably?
I would say based on, first of all, thank you for the question. And I would say, having sat in that meeting, there was a lot of discussion on both sides. There really was. There was a lot of discussion. And at the end of the day, Russ and I both tried to make a decision that was what I considered a compromise. Yeah, I guess you could use the word compromise, but an amicable way to move forward, let the city get its needs met, and also being a little conscientious of those businesses and things that are there. And really, during this time of COVID and so much going on in today's society, saying if, if they're not going to take this property over sooner than later, let's pause and do what we think is good and fair and reasonable, I guess. So if we want to use compromise, fine. I thought it was reasonable. I thought we were getting the needs met in terms of exiting the relationship, but yet not making it so incredibly difficult, particular during this time where we are in a major state of affairs that's hard on a good business on a good day, let alone this horrible environment that we're in that sets for such more difficult and challenges. So, yeah, I think compromise is a good word, but just trying to be a little reasonable and fair to the others, what, is what we try to do.
Thank you very much.
But I, I, I respect Councilman Trimble's thoughts and viewpoints and where he stands. But at the end of the day, that's where I landed, and it's up to the group to support or not and do what's best for the end of all.
I, I would, I would just add one thing, and that is that, you know, as we sat there and had the conversation on the dais before this got referred to the Public Safety Subcommittee for a, a recommendation, I mean, I think a lot of us up there were trying to come up with what would be a win-win, you know, so that we could have our cake and eat it too. I think, I think a lot of us value what the incubator brought to Valley Junction, how it helped the small businesses, and, and frankly, and I think it spoke volumes to small business owners and entrepreneurs in West Des Moines, says, "West Des Moines is open for business. We care about small businesses and entrepreneurs. Come to West Des Moines." You know, it's, it's, it's sad to me that, that it's come to this, that we, that we couldn't have a win-win for, for everybody. I think in the near future, I'd, I'd like to continue pursuing opportunities to have a, I'll call it not an incubator, but a small business center for people to come, get help with business plans, find out what assistance they may be eligible to receive from a state, federal, or even local standpoint, have workshops that they can learn different aspects of running a business and how to improve being a business owner. I, I think that's something that would, would serve us well in West Des Moines, and I'm sad that this relationship is, is, is coming to an end. There's a whole history to this thing and why it's coming to an end. It was kind of put in motion when we pulled out our support with our economic development staff, and it's kind of gone downhill from that. I appreciate all the efforts of Mike DeCock and the, uh, Incubator Board, everything that they did. I appreciate the, the professionalism of Jeff Wood and going through this entire thing. This wasn't easy for, for any of us involved in the situation. And, but it just came down to what the smartest decision was for the taxpayers at the, the current time that we're in. And both Councilwoman Hardman and I believe that it just made economic sense, financial sense to, to move our fire EMS in here. And as a result, we couldn't continue the relationship with the incubator. But, uh, anyway.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready to vote on 4P. So all those in favor of Renee's motion, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed?
I reluctantly.
Okay, Kevin, you're reluctantly in favor of it as well?
Yeah, yeah. Because it gets rid of, I mean, it gets the fire EMS down there.
Okay, Kevin, you're breaking up. I'm not sure. Yeah.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm supporting this, voting in favor of it only because it, it gets Gravitate out and takes it over as a fired EMS facility. But I still, I don't like the fact that it doesn't have a 2020 end date.
Okay, so there are five yeses, so the resolution-
But, but wait a minute. I, I appreciate that, but how do you know it doesn't have a 2020 end date? It's six months, Kevin, from, from when the governor reopens Phase One.
We don't know when that's going to be, Russ. That's why you've put in here June 30, 2021.
No, no, it's the sooner, it's the sooner of the two.
Yep.
Whatever comes sooner, Kevin.
But if she doesn't open till January 1st, then it's June 30, 2021. That's my point.
Okay.
It's the facts, Russ. It's not what somebody suspects or what somebody thinks. It's the facts, and we don't know when that is going to be, that she's going to open it up. It might not be till May of 2021. Nobody knows, right?
Let's-
Do you know, do you know-
But June 21 was the original date, end of the contract, right? Was that the original date?
It was, but we're trying to vacate them early, is what I thought with this, and this doesn't do-
I suppose, I suppose by your logic, Kevin, she may not reopen until 2023. We don't know.
We don't know. That's my logic, Russ. Nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know.
Well, the other factor, though, is, and then we're going to move on, is I, I think the public safety team, they weren't going to be able to take this building over before next summer anyway.
Right.
So, so-
You've got to get them in there and get work done to it, so.
But, yeah.
That doesn't happen overnight.
No, but we're going to do it as a part of next year's budget, which I think is, meets their timeframe, so. The, the resolution for 4Ps passed. Item 5 is old business, 5A, the preserve, south of Raccoon River adjacent to Southwest Grand Prairie Parkway, amend the planned unit development to establish development standards, and modify signage regulations. Raccoon River Land Company LLC, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration to the first reading.
Second.
Second.
Be the second reading.
I'm sorry, second reading.
Yeah, any, any other questions or comments on the second reading? Okay, Ryan? Oh, all, all those in favor of the second reading, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ryan.
5 yes, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 2383 pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second reading's approved.
Move waiver, the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's approved. Item 5B, Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area, approval of amended TIF ordinance. City initiated. This also is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move approval of the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
5 yes, ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt.
We need a motion to approve the second reading first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was ahead.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second reading's approved. Now, Greg?
All right, I move to waive the third reading and adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Approved. Item 5C, amendment to city code title 6 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6 Parking Regulations, modify the requirements for prohibited parking. City initiated. This also is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
5 yes, ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many title 6 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6, Parking Regulations, Section 1 Parking Prohibited.
Move approval, the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second reading's approved.
Move waiver, the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second. Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item 6, Public Hearings, Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider community development block grant program, 2020 to 2024 consolidation plan, 2020 to 2021 annual action plan, 2019 to 2020 amended annual action plan, 2018 to 2019 amended annual action plan, citizens' participation plan and outreach policy for minority and women-owned businesses initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Ever received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6A. All right, hearing known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This came through Finance Administration, and we need a resolution to approve the community development block grant program plans.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Questions or comments?
You know, this is, uh, Matt, just a quick question here. Certainly a lot of work has gone into this in reviewing that document, so thank you for what looked like a, a, a whole lot of time, and I'm sure it was. One of the things I noted in there is that the administration of the program is about 20%, and it looked like, you know, roughly $100,000 worth for administration. And I certainly appreciate that there's costs associated with administering a program, but I'm hopeful that maybe if there's a way, as this is implemented or, or however it rolls out, to perhaps lower some of those administration costs so that they can maybe, you know, go towards the bus passes, the mortgage rent, utility, you know, some of those things that were identified in there. Just curious if there was any insight on that.
I, I don't think we know yet whether or not the COVID-19 CDBG funds can be used- I, I don't think we know yet whether or not the COVID-19 CDPG funds can be used for administrative purposes. I think that we got the question still out there. If it can't be, my understanding is it's gonna be rolled into the, to the assistance for rent, mortgage, and, and all those things. But I don't know if Christine is on or.
I am. Yep. So Christine Gordon, housing planner. Correct. The administration for, with the CDPG COVID money is questionable. We've asked HUD and they have not gotten official guidance.
Okay, but I think, I think to Matt's point, we're gonna minimize, you know, we're gonna minimize the administration to just the amount we need to administer the program. So, I'm sorry, Renee, go ahead.
That's okay. I did see language in the six A that said outreach policy for minority and women-owned businesses. So is that, Christine, you might want to speak to it. We have that? That's been developed? Or this is allowing us to act on it? Just tell me a little bit about how that piece plays into what we're voting on.
I think Christine is frozen. I think her screen is frozen here.
Shows our mics off.
There we go, having some technical difficulties.
Yeah.
That's okay. Hi. Yeah, I can't hear.
Councilman McKinnney, this is Tim Stiles. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. I just wanted to note that the city could, actually, the, the true overhead and administration of the program is significantly higher than what we're claiming. We're really only, the administrative part that we're claiming is really just the caseworkers' direct salary and, and associated costs of working individually with those programs. We're not recovering things like, like, you know, building costs and, and so on and so forth. So, I guess some organizations would look at it as administration. That's the technical term that, that HUD uses. We feel like it's really a direct program cost that, that's being shown there, I guess. It, it's just the matter of the terminology, I think.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that additional context.
So I'm not sure if Christine's back with us and can.
I am back. I'll try. I'll leave the video off. Yep, I'm back, and I'll leave the video off and see if this works. Is there any other questions I can answer?
We didn't ever hear, we didn't hear a response to Renee's question. Did you hear that?
I did not. I missed that.
Okay, that's all right. My question was, in the six A language, it talks about citizen participation plan and outreach policy for minority and women-owned businesses. And my question is, is that a new policy? Has that been developed? How is this funding executing on that if there is a current policy? Just wanna see how that all interplays.
Sure. The citizen participation plan is significantly changed because of the COVID. HUD allowed a waiver to allow us to change from a 30-day public comment period to five days so that we could quickly change allocations of money and quickly get it implemented. So that's the biggest change with citizen participation plan. The outreach policy has been the same that we've had, and we update that or relook at it every five years, but we're always open to suggestions that there's other ways that we can incorporate better outreach. The difficulty is with CDPG dollars, we don't do much hiring of businesses necessarily. You know, most of our money is directly going to citizens and clients as opposed to actually hiring businesses to do work. But if you look at that document and you have suggestions, definitely open to other ideas.
Okay, if you can email that to me, I would like to look at that, and I would like to see how proactive we are with that. So I, I do know that, you know, I know Tom hired a minority business owner to do a consulting project last year for some diversity, and that was great. So, yeah, I'd just like to see it and see what I can do to help.
Yeah, but then as part of this.
And encourage it.
Sure, it's as part of the staff report, but yeah, I can email it to you individually. That was a huge staff report with a lot of pages to read.
Okay, that'd be great.
The only other comment, yeah, sorry. The only other comment I want to make is, I don't know if Lucinda's on or not, but I do this, the assistance to individuals in West Des Moines will be available starting tomorrow for the COVID-19 part of this, for the rent assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance. And I appreciate, you know, Christine and Community Economic Development working hard to, to make that happen. I want to make sure that if Lucinda is on, if not, somebody talks to her about getting a press release out as quickly as we possibly can, letting people know that this money's available, and maybe talking about who, who can qualify for this funding and, and where they can go to, to, to apply.
Uh, yeah, Russ, this is Lucinda, Communication Specialist, and we have a press release ready to go, so we'll get that out tomorrow morning. We were waiting for council to approve this first.
Awesome. You guys are great. Thank you, Lucinda.
You bet.
All right, so all in favor of six A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those plans are approved. Item six B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Valley Junction Business District pavers and sidewalk phase one initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 24, 2020 in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six B. All right, hearing, no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I do want to mention before we get into council comments that Kevin and I both received a call from a concerned citizen about the existing trees that were gonna be removed as a part of this project. And I know Kevin, he appreciated the additional information that you gave him when I visited with him. He just wanted to make sure that we shared that. So, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add on that citizen's comments to you or not, Kevin?
No, he just wants to see if there's any way at all if we can save, you know, any of the trees down there. He, you know, he likes having the birds in them and all that. And, but I also explained to him that that was part of the reason that we're changing some of this, because people don't use the walkways, because of the birds and the mess that they leave in, in the areas. So, he understood, but he wasn't happy about it really, but yeah, he understood.
Your Honor.
So there are two resolutions and a motion we can take together.
Move approval.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Any other questions or comments on these two resolutions and motion?
Mayor, I'll just say, I'll just say, as I looked at the, at the packet today, I was really applauding everybody that was involved. I mean, there were so many groups and associations that were consulted in this project before. It's just great to know that there was a lot of input saw it. So, thanks for everybody doing the extra work on that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, this is Matt Howie from the historic Valley Junction Foundation. I don't know if anyone can hear me. I just wanted to say we appreciated the city's outreach to us regarding this paper project. And although there's a lot of stress down here about how things are going to go for the rest of the year, this is a tremendous step forward and a really great implementation of the historic Valley Junction master plan. I particularly wanted to give credit to Councilman Trevallian and other people who worked to make sure that we could make improvements to the walkways that ultimately I think are gonna be really good. I spoke with the same resident about the concerns with the trees, but we just lost another crab apple a couple of days ago down here after the heavy wind came through. And so, I think it's clear that there's a substantial need that, you know, should be addressed here. And we just wanted to thank the city for prioritizing this area and really doing a lot of outreach to make sure that residents and businesses down here had a, a voice in that, and, and we're grateful that the project is moving forward.
All right, great. We appreciate those comments.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, all, all in favor of six B, one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those items are approved. Item six C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the public safety station number 22 rough replacement initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 24, 2020 in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six C. All right, hearing, no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion if we can take together, and this came through Public Services Council Committee.
Move approval.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items are approved. Item seven, new business, seven A, Dave and Buster's 170 South Jordan Creek Parkway preliminary plat to subdivide property into one commercial lot and site plan to construct a building pad for a 22,600 square foot building. Brookfield Properties Retail, it's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat and site plan. There are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I said one.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Okay. I said one question. First off, a comment, actually. I'm really, really excited for this, and I'm very supportive. My only question was, maybe I could direct it to, to Brian, but the question of parking, it seems like my, my question is if there's going to be enough parking. Looking through the plans, you know, if you've ever been to that movie theater on a Saturday night, it's, it's pretty packed there, and imagine putting a Dave and Buster's there. And so my question was related to, will, will there be enough parking?
This is Lynn Tweet. There is plenty of parking on the mall property itself. Whether or not it's in the location you want it is a different story, but there is ample parking within the mall site.
Okay.
And I think, I think to Greg's point, because I've had some residents reach out to me, that is the primo parking spot for almost anything that happens at that mall. If you look at Music Around the Lake on Sunday nights, if, and, I mean, that, that is the main parking field, which I guess is why Dave and Buster's wants to be there. So, I, I think, but that's gonna, that's gonna drive some of that other parking to other locations on the mall. But, I, I, yeah, I, I can see, I can see that as an issue in the future, I, I think.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's one of the highest parked areas, but to your point, that's likely why they want to be in that location. So.
Well, and I guess we've got to leave it up to Brookfield Properties, because if that detracts from the other tenants and their business, they're gonna have issues with the owner as a tenant of the building. So you gotta believe that Brookfield Properties has taken all that into consideration as well.
Yeah, and there, there always was intention of putting another restaurant or another pad site on that side. There is actually one there. It's just, it's a little bit to the south of that. So, it was definitely something that's always been planned.
Yeah. So, just so they've taken that into account. Again, that, that area is blocked off a lot for the events that happen out there around the lake. That's where a lot of the handicap parking is. So, I think it'll be interesting to see how that other gets, gets placed. But I, I agree with Greg's initial comment, that, that seemed to be the, the bullseye of this mall.
Yeah. Thank you, Lynn.
I would just, I would just make a comment, and the comment that I would say is amen. I was worried that maybe we were gonna lose these guys, maybe they were gonna go somewhere else. I've had, I don't know how many residents asking me about Dave and Buster's, including my kids recently, which I couldn't believe. And I said, guys, I have no idea where they're going, and I'm not sure, maybe they're not even coming to West Des Moines anymore. You know, maybe they've changed their mind, because it seems like this has taken quite a long time. So I'm just relieved that they are still gonna be in West Des Moines, and can't wait till they get here. I think a lot of residents will feel the same way.
Yeah, to Russ's point, I hear from a lot of people what's happening with Dave and Buster's and Steak and Shake. Those are the two, two hot restaurants that people want here. So, good to see it finally coming to fruition.
Steak and Shake's the other one I hear about too, oddly. So it's a great restaurant, and people are excited for both of these things.
We got a motion?
Oh, I will, I will gladly motion for approval.
Second.
I think the mayor is frozen here.
Yeah, I think the mayor froze.
Mayor's frozen.
We did already have the motion, so.
Okay, that's what I was asking, if we did or not. I couldn't remember, so.
I don't know why the mayor's not being heard right now, but.
I think this was probably a bug that the council put on his computer.
Looks like he might not be on the media anymore, so I guess I'll, I'll take the vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution on that one passes. And while we're getting the mayor up, I'll go ahead and just introduce item seven B.
Ross, Ryan, I could, Mayor Portem, I could go ahead and facilitate if you need me to.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. If you want to introduce seven B.
Okay. We have seven B, Westport 33346, V Court, subdivide property into 83 lots for single-family development, five public street lots, four outlots for future development, and one outlot for storm water detention. Westport Development LLC, we have this item for resolution.
I would, I would move approval of the preliminary plat.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay.
All right, I'm back.
Ryan, are we good on that? Mayor back?
I'm back, thank you.
Okay, we're on seven C.
Great, appreciate that. Seven C is amendment to city code title four, health and safety regulations, chapter four, nuisances, section 10, specific crime property declaration and abatement. Clarify the process regarding disorderly and nuisance property violations. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the first reading that says there's no outstanding issues, and it came through the Public Safety Council Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just say, I, I would just say I appreciate this, you know, Chief Scott bringing this ordinance to us. I think this is gonna be a, a great tool that's gonna help us deal with some of these nuisance properties where, you know, I think, you know, some of you on the council, we've dealt with nuisance properties, and it's very difficult. I think this will help us tremendously with that, so.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Five yes, ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending title four, health and safety regulations, chapter four, nuisances, section 10, specified crime property declaration and abatement.
Move approval of the first reading. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, first reading's approved. Item 70, amendment to city code title four, health and safety regulations, chapter four, nuisances, add section 11, disorderly and nuisance properties to the city code. City initiated. This also is an ordinance for the first reading, came through Public Safety.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending title four, health and safety regulations, chapter four, nuisances, by adding section 11, disorderly and nuisance properties.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item eight, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item nine, other matters. Are there any other matters that any council member would like to raise tonight? All right, hearing none, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you, everybody.